Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, I would ask if you could conduct the roll call.
The following councilors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Kusmerik, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kucher, Counselor Dina Tally, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squalia, Counselor Van Hazinga, Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Zarella.
And Counselor Zarella with a motion relative to suspension of the rules.
Move that we suspend all rules of this body or of our parliamentary authority that are in conflict with either the remote participation format or the remote participation of the guidelines of the state during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. We'll do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz. Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Counselor Boishman, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
Yeah, as motion carries. Next, public forum. The public has been advertised to contact the city clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments of not more than two minutes. And none have been brought to our attention. We did have a late filed communication from Sue Christiansen, and I'll just read this, councilors. On Saturday, October 24, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, the City of Pittsburgh Health Department and Police Department will provide the public with the opportunity to dispose of unused and unwanted prescription drugs outside the municipal office's parking lot at 166 Boulder Drive. This service is free and anonymous, no questions asked. Residents may drive up and simply drop off any medication. This initiative addresses a vital public safety and public health issue. Medicines that languish in home cabinets are highly susceptible to diversion, misuse, and abuse. Rates of prescription drug abuse in the United States are alarmingly high, as are the number of accidental poisonings and overdoses due to these drugs. To keep everyone safe, all COVID-19 guidelines and regulations will be followed. A social distance will be observed, and masks are required. For those interested, resource materials and Narcan will also be available. Any questions may be directed to my intention. Thank you, Sue Christiansen, Substance of Youth Prevention Coordinator, City of Pittsburgh. And next, if there are no objections, we'll take an oral report of the appointments committee, which met earlier this evening. Took up the following three matters. The first was a member of the Conservation Commission, term to expire October 1, 2023, of Mr. Ralph Baker. That was unanimous. And then the following two were for the same individual, permanent reserve police officer and permanent full-time police officer for the Pittsburgh Police Department of Mr. Grant H. Jensen. That too was unanimous. And joining us this evening is the appointee himself and Chief Martino, and I'd like to welcome Chief Martino. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Counselors, good evening. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Earlier this evening, it was my pleasure to present Mr. Jensen to the appointments committee to be the next Pittsburgh Police Officer to come on deck. Just a brief explanation, Mr. Jensen's a Pittsburgh native. He was educated in our city, went on to high school up at Oakmont, then came back. And he attended Pittsburgh State University, where he's part of the nationally acclaimed program up there for criminal justice. This is the first candidate that our police department is able to receive from this nationally acclaimed program. And it comes at no better time than the present, this substantial savings to the city. And quite frankly, this is the future of policing, what you're seeing in front of us this evening. Mr. Jensen comes with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from this university. Fully trained academy through the university. And we're very excited to bring him on board tonight, and it's my pleasure to introduce him to the full council and to the mayor this evening.
Mr. Jensen, thanks again. Congratulations. We're excited to see you join the Pittsburgh Police Department and excited by your experience that you're bringing to the table and certainly your educational experience at Pittsburgh State University. So thank you for joining us. Thank you for your interest in serving our city. And we're excited to take a vote on your appointment momentarily. Before we do that, I just also want to call attention to Ralph Baker, who wasn't necessarily given the opportunity to speak in the appointments committee. We did approve his appointment, but I want to ask Mr. Baker, if you do, if you wanted to just provide any brief remarks, not necessary. But I don't want to deprive you of the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilors and Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to, after two years of service as an associate member of the Pittsburgh Conservation Commission, to be appointed as a full member. And I look forward to serving the city in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your experience, not only on the Conservation Commission, but across so many city boards and commissions in Pittsburgh and across the region. With that, I have a motion made by Counselor Fleming and a second by Counselor Zarella. And I apologize, Counselor Boishman, was that a request to speak as well?
No, I just wanted to say hello to Mr. Baker and say thank you very much. He ended a new job. Please, Chief, press and two.
Very good. All right. We have a motion and seconds. And unless there is any objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is unanimous. Congratulations to Mr. Baker and Mr. Jensen. And excited to have your experience and expertise for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have Committee on Records, Counselor Squalia.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. We'll do this by unanimous consent unless there is any objection. Seeing no objection, it is unanimously approved. Next, we'll hear a report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you. Finance messed last Tuesday and had three orders, all grants. Two are grants, one is a matching appropriation for that grant. So 20720 was a Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs grant for $23,050 to replace antiquated audio video investigative equipment. And 20820 was a FEMA 2019 Assistance to Firefighter Grant for $387,710 for the purpose of the grant, which was to replace the obsolete self-contained breathing apparatus for hazmat rescue operations. And then 20920 was the city's matching appropriation of 38,771 for those self-contained breathing apparatus charged to reserve for other municipal purposes capital expenses. All were adopted.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve, which we'll take by unanimous consent unless there is any objection from the council. Seeing no objection, it is unanimous. Next, Legislative Affairs Committee, Senator Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Legislative Affairs met last Tuesday, October 13. There were four petitions before us. The first was a petition by New View Communities in 6282 Academy Street to amend the boundaries of the Smart Growth Zoning District to incorporate a portion of land that is necessary to complete that project. That was approved. Mr. Morosky, that was 19220. Petition 20420, Mr. Morosky appeared and requested changes to the City Code, Chapter 147 Sewers. He asked that the petition be amended or the original ordinance be amended, and that was approved as amended. And I believe that Mr. Morosky said he was going to be available tonight to answer questions, but I don't see him. I don't know if he's on board.
He is your counselor. I just asked FETV if they could bring him in before you conclude your committee report.
Okay. Do you mind if I just finish the other two and then Mr. Morosky could speak? The third, 02820, Counselor Boishman to amend Chapter 16958 to increase the fee from $30 to $60 when the winter parking ban is in effect. That was given leave to withdraw. And then 12820, Counselor Paul Boishman to petition that all applications for dealer's licenses must be for 10 cars minimum. We decided to hold that and send it to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and the Public Works Committee. I mean, the Building Commissioner. Thank you. And that was approved as well.
Great. I know you have both Mr. Morosky and Mr. Skorowski. I think first on the agenda, we had, I'll just take it in order, Mr. Skorowski, anything further to add to 19220?
I don't believe so. It's also referred to by the Planning Board report later on. I'm happy to answer any questions on it. It's really just an administrative fix for a zoning.
Counselor Zarella, I'll go to you next, unless this pertains to either one of these gentlemen, which point, just please do let me know. And then next, I'll go to Deputy Commissioner Morosky. If you'd like to speak to 20420, is there anything further you needed to add?
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Chair, and members of council, Mr. Mayor. Subsequent to the Legislative Affairs Committee, the Chairman of the Water and Wastewater Commission submitted a letter of report of endorsement and support of the petition 204-20. If the council hasn't received copy of the letter correspondence, I'd be pleased to read it to the council.
Madam Clerk, I know you forwarded that communication to me. Was that forwarded to all councilors as well?
Sorry, I believe Counselor Kusmerik, I'm not sure if it was, so I can send that out this afternoon if you'd like, right now.
So that said, if you could, I guess, read that letter, and then if there's any questions from there, and then I know certainly Jeff, that you'd be back in front of us for an official ordinance change as well, once you work with the solicitor to prepare the official language. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President, that is correct. Very quickly, it's a one-page letter. I'll read it quickly. Honorable City Council, subject line sewer ordinance changes to the City of Pittsburgh's City Code, Chapter 147. Dear Counselor, President Michael Kusmerik and members of council, before the council is a petition number 204-20 submitted by DPW Deputy Commissioner of Wastewater, Jeff Morosky, concerning changes to the city sewer ordinance, City Code, Chapter 147 Sewers. These changes fall within the following categories. Incorporation of EPA-approved local limits, which need to be promulgated into ordinance. Incorporation of changes required by pre-treatment streamlining rule of the National Pre-Treatment Program 40 CFR 403, which needs to be promulgated into ordinance. And correcting inadvertent erroneous changes from the May 9, 2019, updated ordinance. Deputy Commissioner Morosky presented the subject ordinance changes to the Water-Wastewater Commission at the September 9, 2020 commission meeting. The changes fundamentally concern compliance with the Industrial Pre-Treatment Program, regulatory issues and changes required by the EPA, and also correcting errors in the previous ordinance update. At the September 9, 2020 commission meeting, the commission motions and approved by unanimous vote to approve changes to amend the City Code, Chapter 147 Sewer Ordinance. On behalf of the Water-Wastewater Commission, I hear and convey the commission's support of petition number 204-20 and kindly request that the City Council also vote to approve the petition. If there are any questions concerning this matter, please contact the undersigned, which is Mr. Rick Keely, Chairman of the Water-Wastewater Commission.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. And with that, I have several councilors in queue. The first is Counselor Zarella. The floor is yours.
I believe actually Counselor Boishman is ahead of me. However, I would like, prior to making any remarks, to make a motion that we bring 19220 before the council out of order so that we can dispose of it at the same time as the associated Legislative Affairs matter.
There would be simply a report to Councilor, a lot of the Planning Board. It would simply be a report of the Planning Board. All right, so you've made a motion to take 19220 out of order. Do I have a second for my council?
Second. Second.
I have a motion and second to take 19220 out of order. Does this require a roll call vote or simply unanimous consent, Counselor Zarella?
I believe it can be done by unanimous consent, but I must confess, I didn't actually check before I made the motion.
Do we have any opposition from councilors to taking this by unanimous consent? Seeing none, that's what we'll do unless there is objection. We will adopt, we will take 19220 out of order. Seeing no objection, it is now out of order, and before us, I would entertain a motion to approve 19220.
Move to approve.
Second.
An emotion?
And second, Counselor Zarella?
I'm fine with that motion. I just wanted to note that my actual intent was that both would be in front of us at the same time, and we could dispose of them in a single motion after debate, but either way is fine. Doesn't matter.
Because there are reports from two different bodies, I prefer we can take this one out of order and then simply accept the report as we have that motion in front of us now. We'll do that by unanimous consent unless there is any objection from councilors. Seeing no objection, 192, we have accepted the Planning Board's report on 19220. Now back in front of us is the Legislative Affairs Committee reports. We have Counselor Boishman first, and I'll go back to you, Counselor Zarella, if you do have something additional. Counselor Boishman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, on that petition, I got one question. If it doesn't pass, what happens, Tom? On that, if we don't accept this Smart Growth Zone District?
Right, so the reason this is in front of the council and was referred to the Planning Board is the Pittsburgh Arts Community Project. In doing their due diligence, you know, they've got to apply for some pretty complex state and federal resources, and it involves a lot of lawyers and a lot of data group permit decisions to make sure that they are completely sound and airtight before the state and federal government, you know, pump millions of dollars into a property like that. And one of the things that their lawyers had flagged is that although, you know, the City Council, the Parks Board, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, had all voted, you know, to support the parking that is shared between, that will be shared between Low Park and the Pittsburgh Arts Community. There's certainly, you know, the mode of egress, but then the existing parking spaces, some of which will be delineated for Low Park, some of which will go to the residents and guests of Pittsburgh Arts Community. We approved all that. You know, all those boards that I had mentioned. But the one thing we did not do, Low Park was not part of the Smart Growth District. And what that means basically, it could potentially open up that project to some liability because technically speaking, that lot is in a residential district, an RB district. And technically speaking, the thing that we all approved is a commercial parking lot. And that is prohibited in a residential district. So by making it part of the Smart Growth Boundaries and then getting that approved at the state as well, they can apply, and they're about to in about a month, for some really big financing packages for this project. They can go into that application without any worry that there's any semblance of an issue with their application. You know, we've gone through and moved heaven and earth to fix some Article 97 issues and other issues we've had with this project. Feel like, you know, we want to make sure we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed here.
You know, the only reason why I asked that question is because I really have a hard time on that piece of land because I really think that the city did not, we didn't get land of fair value on this particular project, and that's what bothers me the most. I believe we didn't get land of fair value, that piece of property that we gave New View compared to the piece of property that we gave either the Conservation Commission or whoever took it. It was not land of fair value, in my opinion. It was just giving you a piece of land that's worth nothing, and we'll take this land that's worth something. That's how I feel about this whole deal.
Understood. And I guess what I would say is when we had conveyed the property to New View and in all of our marketing materials, through no fault of anyone, but they did indicate that the area that I think we all have understood to be the parking or the driveway to the BF Brown School, all of us thought that was the driveway, including the marketing materials that sold the project. It wasn't, and New View found that in their due diligence before closing on the project. And, you know, I think we all made a joint commitment that to rectify the situation, we would work with them as partners, along with the art museum, along with New View Communities and the artist community in the city, that we wanted to rectify this issue. And I do think, you know, the conservation land we've added does add value. And at the same time, I think we all understood that that driveway was a driveway for the BF Brown School. And were it not for, you know, a slight mishap in how that land was deeded in 1903, we wouldn't be having this discussion today.
And I understand what you're saying, and I'm not going to try to kill the project, but I just feel that the land that we got or we gave away.
Counselor Boishman, I'm just going to cut you off there. That's a matter we have already voted on, and that issue that you're bringing up is not actually before us. It's just simply ensuring that the land now in question is included and both zoned appropriately and included in the Smart Growth Zoning District. So, well, I understand your points. It's not what's before us this evening. So certainly, you still have the floor. Feel free to ask any additional questions of Mr. Skorowski or speak to any other items before the Legislative Affairs.
Well, Mr. Chair, you shot me off. I'm just making a point. I just wanted to verify the fact that, to me, in my personal opinion, the land of fair value wasn't given to the people. That's my point on this whole subject. I'll vote for the issue because I'll be a fool 10 to 1. But the residents, in my opinion, got taken for a ride. It wasn't land of fair value. That's all I got to say.
Next, we have Counselor Zarella. The floor is yours.
I'll hold off for the moment. Thank you.
And Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a correction. I think with regard to petition 12820, I think I said that that motion, that petition was approved, and it was actually held in committee pending input from zoning, planning, and building. And my understanding is Mr. Barbadoro has submitted a letter in favor of that petition, but we haven't yet heard from planning or zoning. So it was held in committee. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Next, we have Counselor Dina Tally.
Tom, on that 19220, if that weren't done, would this project be able to go forward?
Their lawyers don't believe so, and so it's a critical element of the approval process.
I ask because we talk about fair market value, and we didn't get the best thing for our buck. I look at it as, if we didn't do this, then we would forfeit over $25 million in investment. For what? Pennies on the dollar? I mean, we're really down the road here of quibbling, where we're being sticklers on something we may have given away and not looking at the fact that there's going to be over $25 million invested in that neighborhood to fix a massively depressing eyesore. So that's how I look at it. And the Commonwealth, from previous discussions we've had on this, the Commonwealth reviewed this exchange, and they felt it to be a fair exchange, correct?
Correct.
So while I understand that we all have opinions on the matter, I am not a subject matter expert on this. So I am not in a position to say we didn't get our fair market value, when all of the actual experts have said we have. And even if we didn't, I don't care. Because if we don't do this, we forfeit $25 million in investment, and we continue to let a building sit there and further the narrative that the city looks like hell. Thank you.
Next, I have Counselor Van Hazinga. The floor is yours.
I just wanted to quickly clarify the intent of the development of the Pittsburgh Arts Community. That it is not a development that is done for profit. This is a nonprofit organization partnering with another nonprofit organization, partnering with the City of Pittsburgh to develop a abandoned and dilapidated building into a productive use. And all told, with all the government money that's going to be poured into this project, approximately, just to use a very round number, is $25 million. You're going to get a project that if you were to sell it as a market rate for-profit project, would only be worth $10 million. Nobody is profiting off of this project other than the City of Pittsburgh. This is a project that benefits the city. It's not something to make money off of. And I think it's being looked at the wrong way, if that's the criticism. Thank you.
Matter is now before the council.
Motion to approve.
The Legislative Affairs Committee report?
Oh.
Yes.
I have a motion and second to approve the Legislative Affairs Committee report. Counselor Boishman, okay. Acknowledged. Counselor Boishman, I'll give you the floor. You did put that in as a request earlier. The floor is yours.
Okay, I want to talk about 02820. I know you guys gave it lead to withdraw, but I want to say something to you. I talked to the Commissioner, the DPW Commissioner, Nick, and he says that the problem is that when these cars parked on the street, that sometime the plows can't get by. So they do call the police department. I'm not going to dispute that. I'm not disputing that at all. But what ends up happening, the cars that don't get called by, because the plows can get by, when the people plow out their car, they chose to snow in the road, the DPW gets a call back, and they have to go back and widen the street. We pay the contractors, now this is just the contractors, between $95 and $115 per hour, not counting the City of Pittsburgh labor, which is over $100 an hour, count all benefits and pay. So as a taxpayer, as a taxpayer, why should I pay twice to have a street widened when the council or anybody else wouldn't want to pay the extra money for me to come back and plow your driveway because you didn't want to move your car? And I charge you double. You say, no, I'm not paying you. So why are we paying? And why not have them pay on this $60? That's my only thing. It's rampant throughout the ward, not just my ward, throughout. Council President, remember when you first came on board and we changed all the rules? And we had a big storm that year, and what was the front page of the paper on that big storm? Wallace Ave. And what was parked on Wallace Ave? A car in your ward. And the city had to go back and widen that street after the car moved. That's all I'm saying. It costs money, and we should be charging for that. Why should the taxpayers pay? Because I don't want to move my car. It's not like we're asking them to move their cars every night. We're asking them to move their cars approximately 15 times a year. 15. That's all we're asking. To me, that's not hard to do. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Squalia, the floor is yours. Councillor Squalla, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I just wanted to add with that, I I do appreciate councillor Boishman bringing up this issue. And I do appreciate the arguing from the point of the city. Uh, when we do have to send out plow- plows again, it costs us a lot of money as a city, especially when we have to do it over and over. Um, however, I believe that a lot of our 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 citizens uh that that park on the street. Are parking on the street, they're they're more on lower income and a thirty dollar ticket to a lot of people is is a big expense. Um, so I I'm against the general raising of this um. From thirty dollars to sixty dollars, however, if it were brought up to me and it were. Um, thirty dollars for the first offense and subsequent offenses for repeat offenders were sixty dollars. I would be more in inclined to support something like that because the people that purposely park out on the street. Plusing the city, um, you know, larger amounts of money and repeated snow plowing. Uh, those those people um are more deserving of a fine than someone maybe who just moves here, doesn't pay attention, doesn't know. Um, that kind of thing, so thank you.
Next, I have councillor Zarella, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I remember uh councillor Boishman spoke with me about this proposal, I want to say a few months ago before it was put in. And. It appealed to me intuitively and it still did when I saw it on the agenda. But. Quite a while back, I made a commitment on the council, I think I made it in an open session. That unless I have a very, very strong reason to do so. I'm not going to substitute my judgment for that of the subject matter experts in the city departments. Um, and in this case, we heard from Chief Martino saying that. People who do in fact get ticketed or get, you know, caught and told to move their cars. Do so, and that's the point of the tickets as he testified to induce voluntary compliance. The people who. So if the people who are getting ticketed are moving their cars and the people who aren't moving their cars aren't getting ticketed. Then raising the fine isn't going to fix that. Uh, nor is it going to generate enough revenue to meaningfully offset the actual cost of plowing from a revenue standpoint. So. I think there is room to explore this issue further. But for the time being, I'm inclined to go with. The judgment of the people who actually have to enforce these fines. And set this aside for now.
Councillor Schultz, the floor is yours. You're muted councillor.
I was at the same meeting with councillor Zarella and heard from Chief Martino and. He he was very uh adamant about uh wanting to uh keep the the fee at the thirty dollars and. He said he he would rather work with the people and try to try to figure out what, how he could help them. Comply with the uh the parking ban because there there are many people in the city that have a have a hard time finding a place to park uh in in the wintertime because there's not enough uh. There's a lot of uh residences in in our city that don't have a uh a driveway, a place to park in the wintertime, so uh. I I agree with uh with Chief Martino and I I can't support this uh this petition even if it's brought back, thank you.
Councillor Gina Tally, the floor is yours.
This matter is a question of volume, so we have a hundred and eighty miles of public roadway in the city. And we have five cruisers on staff at any one shift. And we said this at the Legislative Affairs Meeting, it's like the ordinance we have to clear your sidewalk. Unless you put a police officer on every street, you're never going to clamp down on this matter. This is what I call feel-good legislation, the whole subject of parking your car is feel-good legislation, it's not enforceable. Okay, and I'm just gonna come out and say it, it's not enforceable. What what we do enforce is by luck, we find the issue, the cops are patrolling, they see it or someone calls it in. And many of the times, the people that are parked on the street, it's not because they're thumbing their nose at the city, it's because they have no alternative. So. From a financial perspective, if the argument is we need to recoup our losses because we have to keep repeatedly going back to these locations. The councillor who proposed this just said that it's about ninety-five dollars for the the these these uh contractors to go back. Well, sixty dollars isn't gonna recoup anything. So if you're gonna make an argument about finances, the fine should be a hundred, not sixty, but but again. I would need to see an analysis of how many times we go back. And then look at what we charge and then the whole another subject is, why aren't we finding everybody? Because we don't have one hundred cops on the street. And because we also have some leniency because this is a case-by-case basis. Um, I had an example last winter where a seventy-eight-year-old woman who lives in the Wallace Towers. Was unable to get her car from point A to point B and she was very apologetic about it, she felt terrible and the police that responded because someone complained. Were very lenient with her as well, understanding her situation. Yes, it cost us almost a hundred dollars to go back there, but. I mean, you gotta look at this on a case-by-case basis, so this is one of those subjects that is so complicated because it envelops the whole city. And you have hardly any staff to watch an entire city at one time. So whatever fee increase you obtain and whatever fines you put out there with that increase. It's not gonna cover the cost of how many times they gotta go back. So. You know, these are the kinds of subjects that bother me, not because of the suggestion, just in general, it's, I don't know how you attack these problems. Unless you have an enforcer on every street, which isn't possible, so. I I agree with the chief in terms of education and in terms of, you know, trying to incentivize people to follow the rules. As best we can, um, and go from there, but. Th- this is not gonna solve that problem, it's a mass, it's of a mass scale, if 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 anything. So um, that that's why I voted against it in committee and I'll vote against it tonight because I don't believe it's gonna solve anything. And and I don't think the problem is rooty involved with someone being negligent knowingly, I think most of the time it's. People don't even know we have that ordinance. At least in the experiences that I've been accustomed to, most of the time the people are apologetic and they're taken aback and they feel bad about it. They're not saying, oh, I know, I'm gonna keep it out there, you know, so that's just from my own personal experience, thank you.
And I'll just add, I I um, you know, I'll thank councillor Boishman for submitting this because I think at the heart of this question is, how do we? You know, how do we make the DPW's job easier so that the contractors and employees of the DPW, when they do the job, they. They can get it done fully and completely the first time, so we we save time, we save effort, we save money. And and so initially I was, I was pretty sympathetic and I thought I'd be voting in favor of this, but I think uh Chief Martino's perspective here. I was suggesting that targeted enforcement and more education uh can actually help us and be more meaningful. And additionally, he he did explain um that, I believe it was two thousand tickets last year. Um, that that he issued uh for violations, the snowban, two thousand, uh which is pretty significant. Uh, and I believe that represented a significant increase over prior years. So I I'd like to see what that initial effort did this last year before we then take that next step. So if he continues to issue the same number of tickets um and the violations and the education program don't change anything. Then sure, I think then we need to go back to the ground board and see what else will work. Um, but so I I I, I applaud councillor Boishman for trying to find a way of of improving this situation, I just don't. I have, I've been swayed and I I think Chief Martino is right that that it isn't changing the ticket uh amounts that will change this. Uh, but it's more education, it's better outreach with police, with DPW and um and with Osby frankly. So, uh, thank you councillor Boishman, uh also have councillor Kuchar, the floor is yours.
I I I uh just, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak, that's fine, everything was already said.
Uh councillor Boishman, I'm speaking for the second time.
I'll let you go, but I just want to make it clear that I won't be voting for this to be withdrawn, my my then that's number one, number two is. I did this not to collect money, I want to make it very clear, I did it for, the reasons why I did it for was for our public safety. Public safety reasons, that when your roads get awful narrow and especially in the wintertime and they can't adequately. Uh, plow the snow, well, once you put it, put the snow, first snowbank down, and none of you ever plowed snow. And once that gets gets hot, you can't move it. You can't move a snowbank unless you come in with a big front end loader or the grader. Because they get so hot, it's like ice, and I think councillor Green can verify that, because she pushed snow, once it's, once it freezes, that's it. So, if the city goes by and they and they and they're not, they're not, they're away five feet from the curb. Instead of being five feet clop- right on the curb. Then you already narrowed your road and that's where public safety comes in. And on a safety aspect, I think we're absolutely wrong. That we're we're allowing that to happen because you're making the roads narrower and now you're gonna, your your roads are small enough already. That cars are gonna get hit or sliced like, because the road's not white, so okay, but I'll let you guys vote on it. On that one, Mike, I'm council president, I'm gonna vote not too late, leave it withdrawn, all right?
That said, I have a motion and second to accept the Legislative Affairs Committee report, we'll do this by roll tall vote, uh madam.
Councillor Kuchar.
Um, yes.
Councillor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
Councillor Green.
Oh.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squalla.
Yay.
Councillor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Councillor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kishmerick.
Yes.
Councillor Boishman.
I say yes to everything except for oh twenty-eight twenty, no.
We can note your objections in a minute, councillor.
Okay.
All right, that is ten to one, except for the one objection.
Motion carries. Uh, next we have a Public Safety Committee oral report, councillor Green.
Um, thank you, our committee met this evening and took up the following petitions, uh zero eight nine twenty. Councillor Bernie Schultz and resident Alex Freeman of Seventy Rainville Ave. To remove the no turn on red sign at the intersection of John T. Centrino Memorial Drive and Water Street. That petition was referred to our Public Works Subcommittee. Um, petition one twenty-eight twenty, councillor Paul Boishman to petition that all applications for a dealer's license. Must be for ten cars minimum, also referred to uh the. It was, it's gonna be held in committee um pending. Being referred to Legislative Affairs, the Building Commissioner and the zoning. Count uh petition one sixty-one twenty, councillor Bernie Schultz and resident. Antea Lewis of one forty-three Charles Street to add stop signs on Charles Street. In both directions at the intersection of Charles and Forest Street. That was given leave to withdrawal and uh both councillor Schultz and the resident are gonna work with our police department directly. Petition one seventy-three twenty, councillors Marissa Fleming and Andrew Van Hasenga to increase the availability of Bond Street parking. Along Day Street is outlined in the enclosed petition. That was also referred to the Public Works Subcommittee. And last, uh petition one ninety-three twenty, Sergeant Daniel Daniel Boudreaux, Fitchburg Police Department. Traffic Unit and Nicholas Bosanetto, DPW Commissioner to amend section one sixty-nine, chapter twenty-four. Parking prohibited at all times, Beach Street East Side from Litchfield Street. South to Kimball Street, Beach Street West Side from Kimball Street to Pratt Street. That was amended to remove the word south. So it would be approved as amended as follows. Uh Sergeant Boudreaux, Traffic Unit and Nicholas Bosanetto, DPW Commissioner to amend section one sixty-nine, chapter twenty-four. Parking prohibited at all times, Beach Street East Side from Litchfield Street to Kimball Street. Beach Street West Side from Kimball Street to Pet- to Pratt Street.
Move to approve the.
Second, I have a motion and second to approve the Public Safety Committee oral report. Uh, unless there is any objection from councillors, uh we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, uh it is so moved, uh and the Public Safety Committee report has been adopted. Uh, next we have the Water and Wastewater Commission, uh meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty. Uh councillors, I I won't read the attached communication that um Mr. Marowski uh also read earlier. And I would just ask that we simply uh accept the uh Water Wastewater Commission report.
So moved.
I have a motion and second uh to accept the Water Wastewater Commission report, uh meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, unless there is any objection uh or further comment from councillors, take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objections. Uh, we will, uh, we have accepted the Water Wastewater Commission, um by unanimous consent. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Marowski, for uh for joining us this evening too, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, council members, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Uh, next we have uh orders two fourteen up to and including to sixteen twenty, uh those all stand referred uh to the Finance Committee meeting. And next we have petitions two seventeen twenty up to and including to twenty-one twenty, all stand referred to their respective committee. And uh and boards.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Have a motion and second uh to adjourn, uh unless there is any objection, we'll do this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned, thank you councillors.
Thank you.